Good evening. I'd like to call the October 20th, 2016 special meeting of the Yukon City Council to order at this time. Roll call, please.
Alberts.
Here.
McCarron.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Smiesterla.
Here.
Yanda.
Here.
Before we begin, I'd just like to lay out a little procedure so everybody can kind of understand. We're here tonight to receive a couple of presentations regarding the forensic audit. And what we'll do is, we will have two presenters that will present the audits. So the presenters will come, make the presentation. Council will have an opportunity to ask questions of the presenters. We'll go to the second presenter, listen to that presenter. Council will have an opportunity to ask questions of the presenter. Finalize a little bit of business as far as accepting those audits. And then we will have comments by the city manager. And then we'll adjourn. And we'll have an opportunity, if the media wants to ask questions afterwards for a few minutes, we will address those questions toward the, or after adjourning the meeting. So that's the process and procedure that we will follow this evening. So with no further ado, then we will recess as the Yukon City Council and reconvene as the Yukon Municipal Authority. The first item on tonight's agenda is a presentation in acceptance of the forensic audit performed by Crawford and Associates. Do I have a motion, please?
Show move. Second.
So if we ask for discussion, Mr. Sickler, is this where the presentation would --
This is where the presentation would occur.
So discussion, please.
Right.
Our presentation, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and Council. Appreciate the time and the patience that you've expressed during this process. My name is Frank Crawford. I'm president of Crawford and Associates. I'm the president of the firm that you had hired a number of months ago to prepare what we call this consulting engagement. I know it often gets referred to as a forensic audit. It's more of a forensic accounting than it is a forensic audit. Audits usually opine or list opinions on the fair presentation of financials, where a forensic accounting is more of an investigation and an examination of events and transactions in order to come to some conclusions. So what you have in front of you is about a 21-page report. Rather than go through all 21 pages, I've got it broken down into four areas. And we will probably cover one area tonight, which is the executive summary, which takes the findings and observations that we had in a detail level and breaks them down into a very short paragraph or two, and then refers you to the latter pages where you can see more about each finding or each observation. So without much further hesitation, let me again talk about the breakdown of the pages that you see. The executive summary, which is what we will cover here, is followed also by a much more detailed background and overview of not only the city, but the events that occurred during the timeframe that we have done this consulting work, along with the scope of services and specifically what it was that we did and how we went about doing it, along with the detailed observations and findings which you find in the back of the report. So with that, let me start the executive summary. Faced with significant unexpected cash flow difficulties and several unanswered financial management questions, the Yukon City Council engaged Crawford and Associates to assist them in analyzing and addressing certain financial issues and concerns, including determining the extent and the causes of cash flow difficulties, identifying any potential misstatements in their most recently issued financial statements, which were dated June 30 of 2015, identifying any weaknesses in accounting practices and financial management communications, investigating concerns regarding certain fiscal management practices of the former city management, and reporting our findings, observations, and recommendations for improvements or further action. Those observations, findings, and recommendations reported herein represent our professional views and our opinions based on our expertise in government accounting, auditing, and financial management, and factual documentary evidence and testimonial evidence obtained during the conduct of our engagement. Our observations, findings, and recommendations are merely summarized below in this executive summary, which we'll cover here in a moment. To understand their full context and detail, please refer to the observations, findings, and recommendations section of this report, referenced at the end of each of the summarized findings below. Our first finding is what we have called uncommunicated cash flow difficulties. Our observations and findings are as such. The city's overall cash and investment balances declined $9,514,000, or 44% in the three-year period from 2012 through 2015, as a very simple result of spending more cash resources than it received during that period. In addition, the 2016 budget estimates of revenues and expenditures, if realized, would have resulted in an additional $3.6 million decline in cash and investments, or a 71% decline. Based on our interviews and our review of written and verbal communications made by former management and others, it appears that this significant decline in cash balances was not clearly communicated, or was potentially even miscommunicated, to the city's elected officials and to the public. As a result, the city council was not made aware of the severity of the cash flow difficulties they were facing. Our recommendations on that finding, again, more detail on that finding you can see on page eight of this report, but our recommendations were that upon the discovery of the severe cash flow difficulties, we immediately alerted city officials to the extent of the severity of the cash flow difficulties, then encouraged those officials to institute an immediate financial management plan, to begin reducing expenditures where possible, and identifying other potential revenue streams that could be enhanced. Finally, we developed a series of financial analysis-related tools and budgetary communication strategies to provide an accurate and current financial information to city management and to the city council, to assist them in their decision-making process. Again, more detail of that finding is on page eight. Our second finding deals with uncorrected misstatements found in the city's 2015 annual financial statements. Our observations and findings are as such. The city's June 30, 2015 financial statements prepared by a contracted CPA firm and audited by another CPA firm were purported to be prepared in accordance with what we call generally accepted accounting principles, or GAAP, and therefore free of material misstatements. However, based upon our review and a re-audit of these financials by a new CPA firm, it was determined that the previously issued financial statements contained numerous material misstatements, departures from GAAP, and omitted disclosures that were not corrected during the initial financial statement preparation process, nor detected by the initial audit, and therefore were not communicated to the city council and other users of the financial statements. As a result, the city council and other users of the city's financial statements could have been relying on and potentially making decisions based on inaccurate or incomplete financial information regarding the city's financial condition and its result of operations. Our recommendations were that we recommended that the city council, we recommended, and the city council concurred, that the 2015 financial statements should be recalled, corrected, and reissued because of the magnitude of the misstatements and omissions, and because of the probable current reliance on these inaccurate financial statements by various users. The 2015 financial statements have subsequently been restated by our firm, re-audited by a new CPA firm, and are being reissued to the user community. I believe that is the following presentation, once I am done, is the presentation of those new reissued, re-audited financial statements. The extent of the misstatements are detailed in quite a bit of more detail on pages eight through 16 of this report. Our third finding deals with unreported noncompliance and internal control deficiencies. Our observations and findings are such. The report on compliance and internal control, which accompanied the original 2015 audit report that was issued by the city's former financial statement auditors, reported that no findings of material noncompliance with financial-related laws or regulations, nor any material weaknesses and/or significant deficiencies in internal control existed. However, the same report, as issued by the new CPA firm hired to re-audit the 2015 financial statements, contained a number of findings of material noncompliance and internal control weaknesses and deficiencies. As a result of the auditor's failure to communicate weaknesses and noncompliance in the original auditor's report, the city council was not made aware of the financial management issues that needed their attention. Our recommendation was that we recommend city management and the council study this new audit report and their findings and recommendations, once you receive it, which I believe will be tonight, and develop a corrective action plan to make changes to the financial management policies and procedures to strengthen those internal controls and prevent any future noncompliance. Again, more detail for that finding can be found on pages 16 and 17. The next finding deals with questionable budget and financial management practices and communications. Our observations and findings are as such. In reviewing the fiscal 2016 budget document prepared by former city management and presented to the city council for adoption, we identified a number of alarming financial management practices and communications that failed to tell an accurate story of the city's financial condition and budgetary projections. For example, estimated revenues that could be used by the city to their main operating funds. In other words, the estimated revenues in the budget that could be used by the city in their main operating funds, those being the general fund, the 96 sales tax capital improvement fund, the special revenue fund, the Yukon Municipal Authority Water and Sewer Fund, the Yukon Municipal Authority Sanitation Fund, and the city stormwater fund. Six main funds presented in the 2016 budget were collectively overstated revenues projected of about $2.9, almost $3 million when compared to the recently approved 2017 estimated revenues and the amounts of fund balance reserves needed to balance the budget in the total 2016 budget. Those numbers were originally communicated to you as a use of fund balance reserves of $1.36 million, when in reality, the city budget actually planned a use of $3.6 million of reserves. That's an understatement of about $2.2 million. So when you combine the $2.2 million of the extra use of uncommunicated reserves, along with the $2.9 million of overestimated revenues, that had about a $5.1, $5.2 million swing in your financial condition, a condition that the city council has indicated was kept from their knowledge. Our recommendation, in conjunction with our notification of the cash flow issues as previously described, we also alerted city officials as to the magnitude of these misrepresented budgetary amounts, and encouraged them to institute an immediate financial management plan, to begin addressing the 2016 revenue shortfall, and to use revised estimates in the development of their 2017 budget. As a result of these actions taken by city management and council, the subsequent 2017 budgeted expenditures were significantly reduced from the prior year to be in line with more realistic projections of usable revenues and resources. Again, more detail of that finding can be found on pages 17 and 18. The next finding deals with potentially inappropriate and misrepresented use of restricted funds. There are basically three separate transactions, three separate issues here, although many of their amounts remain relatively similar. Our observations and findings are as such. In an apparent response to the severe cash flow difficulties being experienced by the city, a number of potentially inappropriate and misrepresented uses of restricted revenues were made by former management without the apparent knowledge of the city council. These items included, one, a $1.3 million draw on restricted construction funds held by a trustee bank that was misrepresented by former city management as a draw, needed to pay the Corps of Engineers for a water tower project, but was instead diverted and used to pay operating expenses of the city simply because no other cash was available. Another instance of another $1.3 million of restricted sales tax money appears to have been improperly appropriated as an unrestricted revenue in the city's general fund during the fiscal year 2016 budget, rather than used to meet the city's required reserve amount. And over $2.5 million in a third instance of unsupported transfers from the city's restricted public employees' sales tax accounts to the city's unrestricted pooled bank accounts over a three-year period. So three separate transactions, two of them coincidentally are about $1.3 million, with the third one being about $2.5 million. Our recommendations were as such. We recommended to the city management and the city council, and they concurred, that they should restore the restricted funds to the extent possible and make appropriate adjustments within their financial records. In addition, a further legal determination may be needed with regards to the ultimate resolution of the unsupported transfers from the public employee's sales tax account. More detail on that finding can be found on pages 18, 19, and 20. Lastly, there were some concerns and allegations that were made during our engagement to us or around us by others that were ultimately deemed not to be within the scope of our services and may require further investigation by others. Our observations here and findings are as such. During the conduct of our engagement, certain concerns were expressed or allegations made by various individuals or parties with regards to actions of former city management that were not within the scope of our engagement because they involved allegations in years outside of fiscal year 2015 or fiscal year 2016. These concerns and allegations included, among others, allegations of noncompliance with competitive bidding requirements, allegations of bid splitting and improper payments with regards to a $600,000 residential sanitation cart contract, allegations of circumventing the normal claims process and approval process for certain purchases, and concerns over a potential conflict of interest with regards to a $2.4 million land purchase. Again, our recommendations were simply that while these concerns or allegations were outside the scope of our work and not reviewed by us, they may warrant further investigation. Certain of these issues are currently being reviewed by other regulatory or investigative agencies. Again, more information on those can be found on page 20 and 21. The next three or four pages is simply more background and an overview of the circumstances that we found upon the beginning of our work in February of 2016, followed by a couple pages of our scope of services and the procedures that we performed, the interviews we conducted and who those interviews were with, followed by the detailed findings that we referred to on pages eight through 21, that again, go into more detail regarding those findings that we had mentioned at the front in the executive summary. So for the lack of time and the lack of the ability for you to basically digest all of this in a very quick period of time, I'll stop at the executive summary and entertain whatever questions that you may have before I step down and we hear from the financial statement auditor.
Questions by the council? Mr. McCarron?
I have exhausted my questions previously pretty well. It was, the main reason, I think, though, that we want a restating 2015 was simply that there was, it was such a mess that we had to completely go back through that to get a new starting line. Is that correct on your part?
That is correct. When we first began the work, and in our attempt to figure out initially where all of the government's cash was, what banks it was in, what accounts it was in, that's when we first started noticing that it didn't seem to make much sense when looking at the financial statement audit, that we couldn't tie back to the records that were there at the city. The city records internally were pretty much in disarray. It was very difficult for us to ascertain within the city's records exactly where everything was. And in addition, as later in the report, you see, the treasurer at that time resigned and took a different job within four or five days of us beginning that investigation. So it took quite a bit of an effort on our part to discover it. I don't think we knew the extent of the misstatements until we started really getting in. We knew there were a few rather large ones, but the extent of the misstatements was even much broader than what we had estimated initially.
Do you want to comment on the cooperation level that you've received so far from the external parties involved?
Yes, we, internal parties with the city, we had significant cooperation from staff and management internally when we began. We attempted some communications with the predecessor auditor and the predecessor accountant that assists the city. While we received some information from them, a lot of it was not terribly helpful. And then in the auditor's case, it pretty much took months to get information from them. And then the information that we ended up receiving ultimately wasn't terribly helpful. So outside of the city, the cooperation was probably not as ideal as I would have hoped for.
You know, of course, we've been at this now for quite a while, and of course, everyone has asked me continuously as to how long it would take, and how long it would take, and by the way, how long would it take? And because of that, you know, I know we're here today, but we wanted it done well. Do you feel at this point in time that this pretty well exasperates all of the major problems and identifies them correctly, that we would have some other things we needed to look at?
You know, I think after beginning this in February and thinking it was going to be a relatively short engagement, and then once the '15 restatement was ultimately going to be decided upon that the city needed to restate those financials, the job became quite a bit bigger. That's really what took the amount of time, was the extent of correcting what those misstatements were, and then having those re-audited by another CPA firm. So it's nice to get this over with and done, but we're still talking about events that occurred in fiscal '14, fiscal '15, and we're now into fiscal '17, now a few months into fiscal '17. So within a month or two, you're going to see an audit of fiscal '16, of June 30, '16, that will show the results of what's happened since '15. But I can almost assure you that halfway through fiscal '16, I believe I came to you maybe in late February, early March, and I warned you that if the pace continued of the spending and the collection of revenue at that time, that I literally thought you ran out of cash before June 30. And it was at that point that the new city manager started, city management started making the various cuts and corrections of the revenue estimates, and basically did everything they could to curtail that spending. And I think that that was a fairly successful effort. I think that at the end of fiscal '16, you'll be in better financial condition than you were probably in February when we had started this engagement. But it's now time to look forward. You're soon to receive an audit for fiscal '16. You're now several months into fiscal '17, and I believe a lot of the things that were there causing problems in '15 are now corrected, and have been corrected in the last six to eight months.
Thank you. Mr. Russell? Councilwoman Smiesterla? Councilwoman Yanda?
I'd just like to reiterate, in the manner in which these transactions were done, is there, could any of that been detected from the reports that were given to the council?
You know, it would kind of depend on which issue we're talking about. I'm not, from the meetings that I've been able to watch that were taped or videoed, I don't recall seeing a meeting where there was a lot of discussion about cash balances and available cash, and discussions along cash flow lines. I'm not so sure you would have seen a lot of information regarding these transactions and anything that would have been presented to you other than the budget. But the budget is, you know how thick the budget is. It's over 100 pages long, and it's got multiple line items of detail. If you're not familiar with reading a government's budgeted documents, you could kind of pick up some of this, but it wouldn't be apparent to just the casual user or the casual reader. And in fact, many of the things that were summarized and communicated to you in the budget summary were not correct. For example, the budget summary contained a paragraph that said that the city was going to supplement their revenues with $1.3 million of reserve money in order to add to the revenue stream so that they could then pay for all of those expenditures. So that basically made you think that you were going to use $1.3 million of your savings in order to balance the budget. In reality, when you added all the different uses of the savings throughout the city, it was over a $3.6 million use of fund balance. If you knew where to look and you understood the flow, you might have been able to pick up some of that. I just don't think that it was communicated to you, though, in the correct manner, and that's probably why it wasn't noticed.
Anything else? Mr. Crosby?
Yes, I'd like to ask one question. You had discussed earlier on in your review on our budget and what had happened at that point in time, how it compared to some of your reviews that you've done, with many other mischaracterities around, and what was your comment?
It was a comment that, when comparing to other communities that we deal with, and again, we specialize in governmental work, we do, you know, this type of work for 70 to 80 different local, state, and national governments. My comment was that in the 32 years that we've been doing this, this was the worst mess I've ever seen. So that says something. Internally, the records made not much sense at all. Externly, it didn't make much sense either. And so that was the collective effort that we've been spending the last six to eight months on, was to get that information right. It's tough to know where you end in a year if you don't exactly know where you started. And so we literally had to go back and restate the end of '14, which is the beginning of '15, restate '15 in order to get '16 the correct beginning number, so that once we are finished with '16, you'll know truly where you are. But again, I've been doing this for a long time, and collectively, all of the staff that worked on this project agree that this was the worst that they've seen. And that's something for us to say.
Other questions by councilmen?
Okay, Frank, I have a few. I guess then the first question that I would have is, early on, whenever the information came out, and some reports by the media that there was missing money, so I would like to know, after you've had an opportunity to work through this, can you address that issue?
I can address that. All the money was accounted for. There is no missing money, money that we could not locate, money that couldn't be found. Again, it was much more of a concept of there were certain monies that could only be spent for certain things that were spent on other things. But there was no missing cash, no missing money, nothing that we would see from what we would consider an embezzlement or a theft of assets. All the money was accounted for.
Okay. And I guess the next big question that I have is, I just want to ask the word "why." I mean, were you able to determine some sort of a scheme, or a plan, or a purpose?
You know, again, I probably don't have a good idea of the motivation since I wasn't here on a day-to-day basis. But it became apparent to me after the interviews with the council, and interviews of staff, and interview of other interested parties, that the council was not made aware of certain things. The "why" you were not made aware of certain things, I'm not so sure I have a good handle on, other than perhaps had you understood cash flow difficulties in November or December, it might have changed the way you were going to vote on a particular issue. I don't know exactly what the motivations would be for, but as you had said earlier, there is no missing money, so it isn't from a cheating of the city or an embezzlement of the city. It has something to do with some other reason. But I think you may be in more, or of a better position to say than I. I.
Okay. One thing I think that the people here and people listening, they'll want to know, when will this report be available and how will it be available?
Tonight, I have presented the signed report to you. It's now part of the public record. I would imagine it would be subject to any other public record request of any other city documents. So you would follow whatever normal procedures that you would have to release this.
So it's available through the city?
Yes, it's not available through me. So it should everything come through the city.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
We'll make sure that anybody, once we open tomorrow, that needs a copy, they'll come by and do an open records request. We will give it to them. News media will give them to them, and it'll be available.
Will there be a cost associated, a copying cost?
Yes, sir. Only for the open records request for the general public, but for the news media, we'll give them a copy.
Okay. Do you have an idea how much that cost will be? It's just a...
I wouldn't have a faintest idea. This is 21 pages. Normally, you charge 25 cents a page, so...
So a fairly nominal cost?
Very nominal cost.
Okay. I guess I would like, for kind of an overview, to step back and maybe give us the 20,000-foot explanation or overview of the purpose. What did you do for the city, just so we understand? And over, do you understand what I'm asking you?
Sure.
Help us to understand, or help the public to understand the purpose of your assignment?
Probably easiest to look at page six of the scope of what we were asked to do. And again, once contacted by the city, I believe in January of 2016, we had met with the city to kind of get an idea of what their concerns were. Once we verbalized, once those concerns were verbalized to us, we created an engagement letter, a consulting engagement letter that we sent to the city, the scope of which I think I broke into four areas that you see detailed out on page six. And again, I can read through these a little bit to kind of give you an idea from an overview of what it was that we did.
Yes, sir. Please do.
The scope of the consulting service for this engagement included the following objectives. One, assist the city and its related entities in analyzing their current cash flows, both restricted and unrestricted, developing a schedule outlining the results and recommendations of such an analysis, and evaluating the effectiveness of the design of the current accounting practices involving cash, with additional recommendations for improvements if warranted. In other words, where's all our money? Why do we not have as much as we thought we did? And where did it all go? And so that has been accomplished now. We've located it. We've explained why, where it went, why it went, and where you now stand. The second thing was to assist the city in evaluating the current and previous practices of communicating fiscal information to the city council and others, and develop reporting and communication tools and practices that will help keep the city council informed of accurate, complete, and current financial status. It became apparent to us, based on this discussion, that you have not been made aware throughout the various years about the decline of cash and the spending more money than you had available to you, and the eating away of the reserves, because it appeared relatively stunning to us that when we approached you in January and February, to talk about the extent of that, it was shocking to most of you to know that, you know, that the bank might have been holding checks so that they wouldn't bounce before the city could transfer money into that account, and that you were actually in jeopardy of draining your cash flow to zero. So if you can recall, there were a few things that I had submitted to you. One's called the Performator, where basically every year, we can assign a score from 1 to 10 on your financial health and condition. And we looked at about three years to kind of show you how the score had changed over a three-year period. Other tools we've talked about is developing some kind of monthly format where you can see what you collected versus what you thought you were going to collect, versus what you spend, versus what you thought you were going to spend, and how that impacts your reserves and fund balance. That was the second objective. A third objective was to assist the city in obtaining information and reviewing certain accounting records to address specific concerns communicated to us regarding fiscal management practices of former city management. That's where we were analyzing the budget for 16, the actual results of what occurred in 15, the communications that were made to you at various meetings related to both 15 and 16's budget. So again, a number of transactions that we looked at, including the use of the restricted reserves from the BOK trustee account also. And then the last objective was to report our findings, observations, and recommendations to the city council, which is the 21-page document that you have in front of you. So that was our objectives at a very large, high-level overview. And again, it's, we've been working on it since the early part of February, and it's now October. And we're just now to the point to say that we're relatively current, but now we have to turn right around and start working on fiscal 16's financial statements, so that those can be looked at and audited prior to December 31. So again, our role as far as this engagement is probably over, unless you have something else that you wish for us to do. And then our role in assisting you with other accounting issues that are current, including preparation assistance of the financial statements, and whatever else that the council throws at us, and the management throws at us, we get to start working on that perspective now. So...
Do you have an idea of the city's current financial health?
Yes, I think, I think things have stabilized since February, when we were here, where you were at a, literally a rapid pace that I had believed warned you that if that pace continued for the next four months, that I was concerned you'd actually run out of cash before the year was over, maybe in May. It was at about that time that the new city manager began work, I believe toward the end of March, maybe April 1. And a number of things were instituted at that point. Don't need to remind you of all the actions that you've taken, but you've done a number of things. Cut back expense through both personnel and other, you've raised some revenue streams, and a more fiscal conservative approach appears to have been adopted. So I think that we're still not obviously where we would like to be. We've got to reimburse our reserves. We've got to get our restricted reserves back to where they belong. I think that may be another year or two beyond what we're talking about now, to get to recover to where I would say that you feel comfortable with, that your reserve money is full, your pot is full, and that you can start looking forward to using some of those restricted monies again. But we have to reimburse them first.
Okay. I want to ask just a couple or a few questions about the undetected misstatements in the 2015 annual financial statement.
Okay.
And in your report, it indicates that that information's found on pages eight through 16. Is that correct, sir?
That is correct.
So when I flip over and I look at eight through 16, I pick up with page nine, and there's all these, that's the only place in the report where I see some accounting and some numbers.
Yes.
So first of all, what am I seeing when I look at this accounting? Generally, what is that?
Okay. What you're seeing, beginning on pages eight, following all the way through pages 16, especially on page nine, where you start seeing the summary of the aggregated misstatements, the city's financial statements are much like a nine or 10-piece puzzle. Each puzzle piece gets looked at individually and determined whether or not that that piece is fairly stated, so that when all 10 pieces of the puzzle have been looked at, it can be assembled, and then we know that the puzzle as a whole is good. In other words, it's free of material misstatement. These numbers that you're seeing here, starting with letter A on governmental activities, following letters B and C and D on the next several pages, show the collective and quantitative misstatements between your originally issued June 30, 2015 financial statements, and your reissued and re-audited June 30, 2015 financial statements. So if you were to look at that first table on page nine, under the letter A, that says governmental activities, and you look at the first number, the first subtotal on the left is called total assets. When you look at that number, total assets, it says the aggregated misstatement, overstated or understated, is 11.8 or almost 11.9 million dollars. And since it has brackets around it, that is a collective understatement. What that means is that the previously issued financial statements understated total assets by 11.9 million dollars, and that the corrected financial statements now has the appropriate number. So since I have an audited new number, and I have the old number that I know wasn't correct, I just did simple math at the subtotal level to determine how bad of a misstatement over or under that was. So every piece, every letter is a piece. So the governmental activities has, I believe, if we counted them, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11 subtotals that you see. There are more than 11 line items in your governmental activities, but these are just the subtotals. All of these, as you can see, were under or overstated by multiple millions of dollars. And then that's just one piece of the puzzle. If you turn the page, you see the second piece of the puzzle, same understatement and overstatement, mathematical quantifications there, C, the third piece of the puzzle, D, E, and F. So basically, what you're seeing are the collective misstatements of the subtotals of your financial statements by what we call opinion unit, or also known as a puzzle piece. And that's the extent of those misstatements. And as you can see, they're quite extensive.
Well, and I just want to understand, so I did some quick math, and I see that there are, I believe there are approximately 104 entries.
There were approximately 104 adjustments that we made to the internal records and to the June 30, 15. We made adjustments beyond the level of the subtotals that you see here. I just didn't want to put individual line item adjustments and make this report 100 pages longer.
So that's what I'm starting to understand, is that, so under A, when it talks about total assets, I assume that there would have been a list of total assets.
Absolutely.
You drew a line, and then that bottom number, so there had to be some numbers that were wrong in there. So there are more than, so there are many more than 104.
Oh, gosh, yes. You're individual, you may have in the total asset subcategory.
Yes, sir.
Where you're looking at total assets, there might be 20 different line, individual line items that make up that subtotal. And we may have made adjustments to 17 of the 20, or 19 of the 20, or 2 of the 20. It just depends on which subtotal that we're looking at. But I didn't think you wanted to see every adjustment of every line item in this report, so that's why I summarized it simply by subtotal.
Okay. So let me ask you a couple of questions as far as that's concerned. As far as the financial statement is concerned, the financial statement of the city, what is that used for?
The financial statements of the city are used by a number of things. There are a number of different users that take those financials and make decisions upon them, or potentially rely on them. The state auditor of Oklahoma is considered a user. Other regulators, if you have grant funds, are considered users. The creditor community is one of the heaviest users. If you have entered the public debt market and you issue tax-free debt, or...
So those are bonds, and we have those?
Absolutely.
So that statement, that's applicable to us?
Absolutely. You have banks, trustees...
Let's stop right there. I don't mean to...
Sure.
So how's that relevant to us? Why would that be concerning, as far as the lending institutions, the banking, the bonds?
Let's take a situation where there's an investor who is thinking about purchasing perhaps some of your bonds, revenue bonds or GO bonds that the city is issuing. So they grab a set of financial statements that's been filed with the SEC to review your financial condition. They want to make sure they're going to get their principal back and get their interest rate back. Maybe on this, in these 15 financial statements that were initially filed with the SEC, perhaps that investor makes a decision that they would not have made had the real numbers or the correct numbers been there. So the potential of leaving your financial statements out in the user community while knowing that they are materially misstated, could lead to basically decisions made by users that they would not have made had the corrected totals been in front of them. And the city simply couldn't afford to know that those numbers are misstated, and then not reissue those financial statements with the corrected numbers.
You believe that would affect us as well, going to decisions we make, right?
You, as the council, are another group of users. I failed to mention that. I thought that obviously is apparent. But yes, you are a user of these financial statements and make decisions based on information that you see that is presented to you. If inaccurate information or incorrect information is put in front of you, you might perhaps make a decision that you wouldn't have made had the correct information been there.
Through your research, were you able to determine who had prepared the 2015 financial statement?
Yes. The city basically hired a CPA firm known as RS Meacham to prepare or to assist in the preparation of the June 30, 15 financial statements. That's who I believe the city had a contract with in order to do that very thing, which was to basically take the city's records and then adjust them into the report that you're about to see, what we call generally accepted accounting principles, and note disclosures, and other supplemental information that the city doesn't put together itself. The city treasurer did not prepare external financial statements, but rather only worked on internal financial statements. And then the city outsourced the preparation of its financial statements to that CPA firm.
Okay. So then help me to understand, where's the disconnect? If the city gives accurate information to the person preparing it, they prepare it and return an accurate financial statement? I assume that's how it's supposed to work. So were you able to determine, did the city provide the people that prepared the financial statement accurate information? Was the problem with the preparers, or was the problem with the city?
We're not exactly sure where the disconnect is, other than there was a disconnect between what we think all parties involved. What got prepared did not begin with what the city's financial statements internally were.
So the numbers don't match?
The numbers don't match. We couldn't reconcile the numbers. So therefore, we had to restate those numbers based on to what they should be. So whether the disconnect was the firm didn't begin with the right numbers, or they were given inappropriate numbers, once those financial statements are prepared, they then go to an auditor. The city submits those to an auditor, an independent, separate CPA, who then conducts audit procedures to verify whether those numbers are right. And then they issue that opinion as to whether or not they're free of material misstatement, what we call the unmodified opinion.
Sir, are you telling the council that there's another group that looked at this financial statement?
Yes.
And who was that?
That was a firm, I believe it's called FSWNB, or FWSNB. I can't remember the exact initials. It's in the report. It's a CPA firm that is required to be independent of the city, independent also of the preparer, and audits the veracity of those numbers. In other words, they do audit procedures, or should do audit procedures, to determine whether those numbers are free of material misstatement, which, when you read their report that accompanies the original 2015 financial statements, says that this is an unmodified opinion, that these financial statements are free of material misstatement. The problem is, is that they weren't free of material misstatement.
And how would they have been able to determine that? By looking at our records? How was that audit conducted?
Most audits are conducted in a variety of ways. Some amounts are derived by reviewing documentation at city hall. Some audit procedures are performed where confirmations with third parties outside of city hall, such as banks and creditors, occur where they communicate directly with the auditor about balances and transactions. There may be other procedures such as inquiry and observation of different processes and transactions that go on. Audits are conducted a number of different ways, but the point is, is that they are supposed to do enough work that they can then provide you with what we call reasonable assurance that the financials are relatively free of material misstatement. Reasonable assurance is not absolute assurance, but it's supposed to be interpreted as a very high level of assurance. And so your financial statements that were originally issued in 2015... And so, your financial statements that were originally issued in 2015 were accompanied by a report that said, "These are, we are reasonably assured, these are free of material misstatements," but they simply weren't. There were misstatements present. We fixed those misstatements, and then to make sure that we were correct, the city hired outside of us another CPA firm to then review the corrected numbers. And I believe that's who's going to follow us with a second report about the opinion they issued on the restated 2015 financial.
So, the city provides information to the first set of CPAs. They prepare a financial statement. That financial statement is then audited by a second group of CPAs?
Yes.
And then that financial statement is returned back to the city?
More or less, that's pretty much correct.
Okay.
Once the financial statements are prepared by the first CPA, then the city is supposed to take those financials and look over them and make sure that the preparer did them correctly. Once you ascertain that, then you send to the CPA.
So, that was my question. Does the city have any responsibility? Are our employees, our staff, is there a policy in place who would help the counsel to understand? Who would have been responsible for, in between CPA Firm One and CPA Firm Two, who would be responsible in the former management of reviewing and knowing whether those numbers were accurate?
Well, technically, in your situation, it would have been the city's treasurer. Who would then take back the financial statements that were prepared by the first CPA firm, and then review them to make sure that they made the appropriate adjustments to convert the basis of accounting and to reclassify amounts. I'm not sure that process occurred. And then instead, whatever was provided back to the city went straight to the auditor as it was. The auditor performed their procedures and then issued a unmodified opinion saying that they were clean, that numbers were correct.
Did you review any of our policies and procedures to make sure that they're effective?
Yes, we looked at a number of, a number of different procedures related to how the city balances records now. The main.
I'm not so concerned about now, I'm concerned about how we got here. I'm hoping that we're working on, so, before, did you look at those policies that were in effect in 2015 and management at the time? Did they, were those effective policies? And then my second question would be, were they, if they were effective, were they followed?
Well, I would say that some of the policies and procedures were designed and in place and being followed, and some were not. The ones that were not were the ones that were most concerning, dealing with the communication to you, the governing body, about financial condition and results of operations. The information that I believe you received, and you've actually told us as part of this investigation, that the information you were getting was that you were in wonderful financial condition, that sales tax revenues were up, that no communication whatsoever occurred, that there were cash flow difficulties, or that we were draining reserves, or that the bank was holding checks so that they wouldn't balance. None of that was communicated to you. So, probably where the city's policies and procedures failed was the line of communication of what was actually occurring financial-wise versus the information that you were receiving in order to make decisions. Internally, the city has policies to reconcile certain accounts and policies to perform certain procedures. They don't always get followed. We obviously saw many situations where those policies and procedures weren't being followed, but that was not within the scope of us to go backwards multiple years to look at those events and transactions. But just because you have policies and procedures in place doesn't mean that they're always being performed. I think now, there's a much greater emphasis on the day-to-day workings of the city, and then communication of those results to you all as a governing body. I don't know if that communication, or I don't think that communication was occurring very well in the past.
We've got a couple more questions, and I'll let you off.
Sure.
Because this could go on for a long time. I appreciate your report, I appreciate your hard work. I think that everyone will be able to understand why it took so long. I believe just the magnitude of it, like you mentioned, I think, earlier, that you started in on one project, and what you thought might be a one-room house ends up being a multi-level, I'm not sure, a house is probably not, but it ended up in a really bad mess, is what I'm trying to say. Okay, so, here are my two questions. The firms that you mentioned, that conducted the, that prepared the financial statements, did Firm A, did they come and make a report regarding the status of that financial statement to this council?
I don't believe Firm A, the one that prepared the financial statements, made a presentation to you. If they did, it was in a meeting that I was not able to view. I don't recall seeing the situation where the firm that prepared the financial statements made an address to the governing body.
What about Firm B?
Firm B, the auditor, did make an address to you. In fact, I think in the report, in the detail, I believe the meeting was December first of fifteen, and that representative of that firm stood where I stand, talking to you about the results of the fifteen audit.
Did you have an opportunity to listen to that?
I did. I watched the video and listened to it, and as listed in some of the detail of my finding, it appeared that the auditor was very complimentary of the city, complimentary of staff. Nearly a negative word was said. Clean opinions issued, no internal control weaknesses, no significant deficiencies in internal control, no non-compliance noted. In other words, it was presented to you as if it was extremely clean. And maybe a little bit of discussion about some grant accounting at the end, but not much of a discussion of anything. Nothing about cash flow, nothing about the reserve money, nothing about the reserve pot not being full, nothing related to difficulties was expressed.
Forgive, I mean, we've met before, and you know I'm a lawyer, so when I said two questions, I really meant two topics, okay? So, underneath all those, there are other questions. So, now, I think I really maybe am down to two, but they may have some subsections, okay? So, here's my next question is, first of all, that video, that's the December video, the December meeting for 2015 of the Yukon City Council?
December first, 2015 meeting, that's correct.
So, that's available on YouTube? That's where you watched it? It's available for the public to watch?
Yes.
When you listen to that video, what is the sentiment that is shared from that individual with the council? The overall sentiment of the economic well-being?
That you were in great shape. That everything was fine, there was no communication of any difficulties, any cash flow issues. It seemed to be that they were making the case that everything seemed to be fine, even upon questions from a couple of different city council members related to some specifics. I believe someone asked, "Would you consider this a good audit, then?" And they replied in the affirmative that yes, they would consider it a good audit. And from their standpoint, the report read as if it was completely clean and free of all weaknesses and free of material misstatement. And as we now know and have a re-audit of those numbers, we know that that's not the case. We know that there are material misstatements present.
So, what he was telling the council simply was not true?
That's correct, in my professional opinion.
Okay. And I want to help you with your professional opinion, okay? It seems to me that your professional opinion is backed up, when my conversation started with you, by a hundred and four different entries on, that you've, and that those are just the general entries that are broken down by, so how in the world could he stand there and make that statement?
You are asking the wrong CPA. So, all I know is, now that I have a corrected, verified audit number, I can look back at the old audit number, and I can do math. And that's all I've done.
So, those were the mistakes, the gentleman that came and spoke to us on December the first of 2015, those are the mistakes that you found with his audit?
Those are the misstatements in that audit that have now been corrected and verified by your new CPA.
Any other questions by the council?
I guess I'd like, you'd mentioned earlier, there was a, when you conduct these audits, it's one of the worst that you've ever seen. And originally, when we were having discussions, we talked about whether or not there was, you know, what constituted a really ugly audit, and what would you see normally? And you talked about thirty to fifty as being part of things that you might find in a standard audit that you were correcting, and this one had a substantially larger number than that. Want to comment on that?
Sure. And again, when I mentioned it was the worst I've ever seen, I'm not talking about financial condition so much as I was talking about the conditions of the internal books and records. In other words, whether things balance, whether things are reconciled, whether things are in the proper line items.
I think what you're trying to say is you've never seen that many mistakes.
I've never seen a mess like.
I have a third grader, and I would tell him, "John, I've never seen that many mistakes." Is that fair?
That's a fair statement.
You're trying to be diplomatic about it, but I need to cut through that. It sounds like they made that many mistakes.
There were a number of things that were made that were incorrect, yes. There were a number of mistakes that needed correcting. And to answer your question more directly, in a government this size, and again, we do this work for a lot of different governments in and around Oklahoma and others, typically we would make what we would consider about anywhere between maybe thirty to fifty adjustments in order to prepare financial statements and convert the basis of accounting and move the things around to, so that it purports to be what we call in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles. So, thirty to fifty, here, I believe we ended up with a hundred and fifty-four adjustments. So, literally, three times more than maybe the worst-case scenario that we would have had before. But again, there were adjustments both to the internal records that the city had, along with adjustments to whatever purported to be the prepared financial statements that were audited as of June of fifteen also.
I have one question. On the auditors, I'm just curious.
New or old? The new auditors or the old ones? Okay.
On when, like, the one that came and did the report?
That's Russell.
Pull the mic closer to you. The one that came and did the report that you watched on YouTube?
Correct.
And you were saying there's a hundred and fifty-four items in that audit that was wrong? Would a normal audit firm, were these things that could be seen, or did it take forensic specialists to see these? Should these been seen?
I saw them. The other accountants that I showed it to, just a look at the face of them, saw it, and noticed a number of things that didn't make any sense. In fact, I believe probably your new auditor, upon their first view of it, and we may see, that may be a question of him also. I think if you're familiar with government financial statements, there were certain things that you could just look at and say, "That can't be right." You know, negative restricted cash, that doesn't exist. I mean, you, that just doesn't make any sense mathematically or common sense-wise. So, yes, it is something that somebody who's familiar with government accounting would have been able to pick up, and even maybe those accountants that weren't familiar with it might have been able to pick it up also.
Thank you.
Is there an organization that these CPAs are held accountable for?
Well, there's a Oklahoma Accountancy Board that is part of the licensing and permit process for the CPAs to renew their license and permit every year. There's a process we have to go through to apply for the renewal of those licenses and permits, and it requires us to answer questions and then to disclose how much continuing education we've had, and where it was, and what it was about. But I think from the Oklahoma standpoint, it's the Oklahoma Accountancy Board is probably the group that regulates from the permit and license standpoint. And then depending on whether they're members of what we call the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants, that's, again, a professional organization that, as accountants, we tend to self-regulate ourselves and develop our own standards. So, professionally, that's probably the, at the national level, the AICPA is what.
So, do they regulate reports such as this that are?
No. Not unless there are some complaints or some violations of standards that are submitted to them. If you submit what appears to be a violation and ask for, you know, an investigation, it probably starts at the state level, and then, depending on what happens at the state level, it would, it might proceed to the national level.
We will address that.
Thank you.
Other questions?
There were just, maybe just a short comment at the very end of your report. There were a number of findings, which is at the, at the end, just a summary of reporting errors and oversights. Do you have any comment on that, or just there?
Are you referring to a particular page?
Well, we can go back here to, hold on just a second. Findings six particularly, I guess.
The ones that were outside the, ones outside the scope of our engagement. Yes, and again, there are one, two, three, four things in just a summary form that, as we were here and conducting our work, we would either hear, or someone would say something, or we would read an article in the newspaper about an allegation. Some of them would involve things that were going on two, three, four years ago. Some would involve transactions that had happened relatively recently. But again, in the request by you guys to not go crazy with our investigation and delve into every little nook and cranny we discovered, we basically simply said, "These are things outside of our, scope of our original agreement," and that we'll leave whatever investigation that maybe needed to be done on these to others. So.
Thank you, Frank.
Your turn.
Any other questions? Questions, comments? Frank, I appreciate, I know we've met several times, and you've worked diligently with the council. I'm happy to see that this product is now here for us to see and for everyone to see. I think you've done an excellent job. I appreciate probably forty minutes worth of questions that I've asked you, and you've answered them eloquently, and I think with detail. So, I want to thank you on behalf of the council and on behalf of the community. I think that you and your group have done an excellent job.
Thank you very much. Appreciate being of service.
Well, and I, you're going to continue to help us. We're working on other things, our policies and procedures to help make sure, but, so now you're a new employee of the city, I guess, or not an employee.
I hope, I hope that the city will take utilization of whatever we can help them with, so we're there if you need us.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. So, Mr. Sigler, what action do we need to take here?
You already have a motion and a second.
Right.
On the floor for the, to receive the presentation and to accept the audit, or the report by Crawford and Associates.
Okay, because the acceptance is down after we adjourn from YMA, so we just vote on the presentation?
We need to vote on the motion before you.
Yeah.
Which is, includes acceptance.
Okay.
The authority and the council.
Yeah, we accept it.
All right. So, roll call, please.
Russell?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Smystrol?
Yes.
Next item of business is 2A, that's the presentation and acceptance of the revised 2014-15 financial audit performed by HBC, PC, I mean, sorry, CPAs and advisors.
And we'll need a motion.
I have a motion.
So, move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Heim, welcome.
Good to be here, Mayor Alberts and members of the council. I am Lonny Heim, partner with HBC CPAs and advisors attending tonight. With me is Chris Heim. He was extensively involved in the 2015 audit in his role as manager of the engagement. This segment of tonight's presentation deals with the reissuance of the June thirty 2015 financial statements. Statements dealing with activity that transpired more than a year ago. As you're aware, a few months after the original June thirty 2015 financial statements were audited by another CPA firm, the city, with the help of a newly hired accounting firm, discovered misstatements believed to be significant enough to call for the reissuance of its previously issued 2015 financial. issued 2015 financial statements. Our firm and other firms were asked to submit a proposal for the audit of the reissued June 30, 15, 2000 financial statements. Later, our firm was hired to perform that auditing of the reissued financial statements, and shortly after that, we began our work. The scope of our work dealt with things that happened from July 1st, 2014 through June 30 of 2015. Some of the matters discussed in the previous presentation or in the media were events that happened prior to and/or subsequent to the period we audited. While we were made aware of those things and considered those matters in terms of their impact on our audit, we did not address them in our report related to internal control and compliance because they happened outside of the year we were auditing. Our 2015 financial audit was performed so that we could express audit opinions on your 2015 reissued financial statements. To do this, we gathered enough audit evidence that, in our judgment, allowed us to determine that the city's financial statements were fairly stated in all material respects in accordance with U.S. generally accepted accounting principles. We are now issuing our opinions on those financial statements based on our audits and under the title Independent Auditor's Report. As part of our assessment of the risks of where your financial statements might be misstated, we considered the city's internal controls and compliance with laws, regulations, grants, contracts, and agreements during the year ended June 30, 2015. Material or significant matters noted during our assessment of audit risk and while obtaining audit evidence were summarized and noted as findings in our report that we issued on internal control and compliance. I want to emphasize that it's important to remember that management of the city of Yukon is responsible for the design, implementation, and maintenance of internal controls relevant to the preparation and the presentation of financial statements that are free of material Management is also responsible for compliance with laws, regulations, contracts, and agreements. If management is unwilling to accept its responsibility in regard to these matters, an auditor cannot perform an audit and therefore cannot express an opinion on the financial statements. So finally, I want to say that our audit was performed to find or determine the extent of misstatements, was not, excuse me, I wanted to say that our audit was not performed to find or determine the extent of misstatements in the previous audit, nor was it performed to determine the financial health of the city at June 30, 2015. It was performed so that we might issue an opinion on whether the reissued June 30, 2015 financial statements present the city's financial position and results of operations, good or bad. Then, as a byproduct of our audit, we issue a report on internal control and noncompliance. However, discovering those weaknesses in internal control or any material noncompliance is not the main objective of our audit. So with all that said, I just wanted to give you an overview, and so now we'll move on to the actual report that you have in your hand this evening. Might be good to have a pen handy if you do. We can mark some things that I think, you know, would be good for you to, as you digest all of this information, and there's a hundred pages of information, so there is a ton to digest, might mark some of the pages that I feel might be critical to your analysis and evaluation of the financial position of the city as of June 30, 2015. So first of all, let's go to the meat of what we did and how we report on that, and that's on page five, our Independent Auditor's Report. In that report, we have several components. First component discusses management's responsibility for the financial statements. We mentioned that a little earlier. Our responsibility as auditors, you know, for what are we doing? What are we required to do? What do our procedures involve? And then finally, in the third heading, our opinions on the financial statements. And we say opinions because there are several opinion units, although you, as a council, may view this as one financial statement. Within these financial statements, there are what we call opinion units, and so we have to issue an opinion on each of those units. So in our opinion, the financial statements refer to present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the governmental activities, business-type activities, each major fund, and aggregate remaining fund information of the city of Yukon as of June 30, 2015. So basically, an unmodified opinion, a clean opinion on these reissued financial statements. Some other information in the report, talks about some of our responsibilities with other information, or with regard to other information presented. I won't go through all that. That is the main paragraph that you want to focus on, our opinion paragraph on page five. Part of what management is required to do, and management is sort of contracted out here in terms of, you have the assistance of Crawford and Associates to help you pull this information together. But management is required, in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, to issue management's discussion and analysis. So that will be the first section that you'll see.
What page, sir?
Page eight. So on page eight, you'll see financial highlights. So I'm going to, I'm going to read those bullet points real quick, and then I'm going to give you a page number to look, not that we'll go to right away, but. For fiscal year ended June 30, 2015, the city's total net position increased by thirty-eight thousand, three fourteen, or three forty-three, or point one four percent. That information is going to be on page nineteen. Also on page nineteen, during the year, city's expenses for governmental activities were twenty-nine point nine million, and were funded by program revenues of four point three and other general revenues of twenty-six point two million. That information's on page nineteen. Also on page nineteen, in the city's business-type activities, which contain things such as the utility operations, revenues excluding transfers exceeded expenditures by three-hundred three thousand, almost three-hundred four thousand. This is not contained anywhere in the report, but on the one, two, three, four, fourth bullet point, sales and use taxes increased by approximately point seven million or seven-hundred thousand, or three point four percent over the prior year. Now, as we audited, we read a lot of, you know, one of our responsibilities as auditors is to review the minutes in detail, and we're looking for certain things, and there was a lot of discussion in the minutes as the year, as you went through the year, where are we on sales taxes? And I don't recall toward the end, you know, where that discussion ended, but I do believe it was represented to you that there was some kind of increase. And it seems to me like it was more than the three point four, but I don't recall specifically. Page twenty-one, general fund reported an unassigned fund balance of six point two million. That's on page twenty-one. And then the last bullet point, for budgetary reporting purposes, the general fund reported revenues and transfers underestimates of three million dollars, or twelve percent, and expenditures and transfers were under the final appropriations by approximately eight hundred and forty-four thousand, or three point five percent. So that's on page seventy. The one thing, and you know, I always emphasize to councils that I talk to as an auditor, you know, read the management's discussion and analysis. There's a lot of good information in that. However, I'm going to have to qualify that in this case because there's a discomfort with the numbers in the 2014 column, and there's a statement or an asterisk that says MDA prior year column has not been restated. So you really can't do the this year to last year comparison with any kind of comfort.
Lonny, what page are you on? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, page eleven.
Seventy, or?
Page eleven, I'm sorry.
I went back to, okay.
I lost you.
Sorry.
I got off, got going here, and, so on page eleven, you know, one of the things management's discussion analysis does is compare current year to prior year, and what I'm trying to point out is that there's a discomfort with the 2014 numbers, so we can't really do that.
What does discomfort mean?
Discomfort means, I'm not sure, I'm not sure that the city, management of the city, current management of the city is comfortable that those numbers are right, and they weren't re-audited, so they're reported based on the 2014 audit, but based on what we know about 2015, we're not really comfortable that those are right.
Yes, sir.
Okay, page.
Does it?
I'm sorry.
I guess, does it mean then though that you are very, you are comfortable with the fifteen?
Yes, yes.
The re-audited fifteen numbers.
Yes.
The re-audited.
Now, we as auditors, we don't, we don't audit those, these numbers in the MDA per se, but we do have to, one of our procedures is to tie them back to the audited numbers, so, so we have to do that, but, so you'll see down at the bottom, it says unaudited. That's because we don't really go in and audit these schedules. We just tie them back to the things that we did audit, so. Page fourteen, financial analysis of the city's funds. Let's look at that paragraph real quick, and I think it's another highlight, or, not maybe a low light, but as the city completed its 2015 fiscal year, the governmental funds reported a combined fund balance of nine million dollars, or a twenty-nine percent decrease from the prior year. So that's a big negative. That's on, that information or the detail behind that is going to be on page twenty-two. The enterprise funds reported combined net position deficit of three point four million dollars, or a twenty percent decrease. That's another big negative from the prior year restated net position. So the last statement says, large decreases cannot be explained since prior year balances for assets, deferred outflows of resources, liabilities, and deferred inflows were not restated for several large prior period adjustments. So that's kind of going back to my comment about fourteen. We're not, can't be a lot of comfort with the fourteen numbers, so we can't really say why that is or if that's the case, so. Down at the bottom, page fourteen, talks about the significant capital assets added in the year ended June 30, 215, the sports complex in Prairie West Boulevard, and those are kind of the things that I wanted to point out in the MDA. Turn to page fifteen, I'm sorry, nineteen, page nineteen. This is a statement of activities which pulls together all the revenues and expenses of all the funds under the umbrella of the city of Yukon. So way back when GAZB, or when the accounting standards were reestablished and reporting was changed, they put the expenses first, put the program revenues in the next few columns, and then they put the general revenues, like sales taxes. So it's a little bit confusing to read, but basically, the number that you want to hone in on is the change in net position down there in the lower right-hand corner, thirty-four, or thirty-eight thousand, three forty-three.
Lonny, help me, I'm not, you've lost me.
Okay.
At the very right.
Yeah, down, says, it's the third line from the bottom in the very far right-hand column.
Thank you.
So, you know, you have close to forty million dollars of resources coming in, and the net of forty million was thirty-eight thousand. It's a very, very small increase. Page twenty-two, down in the, again, in the very far column, far column to the right, very, the third, third line up from the bottom, net change in fund balance had a negative change in fund balance of three point seven million. So that's, again, that's the negative, the low light instead of the highlights, a twenty-nine percent decrease. That's where that number that we talked about earlier sits, and you can see the revenues and expenditures that made up and how you arrived at that by looking at this page. Okay, we're getting through this, so. Again, on page twenty-six, that's the enterprise or the proprietary type funds, YMA Water and Sewer, YMA Sanitation, the Stormwater Fund, gives you the assets and liabilities in page twenty-seven. We talked about that number earlier, change in net position in those funds of five hundred, again, far right column, down at the bottom of the page, three lines, that five hundred fifty thousand, five hundred fifty-two thousand negative, and that's a twenty percent decrease. Another low light. Other pages that I think that you would want to reference and focus on in the notes, page thirty-five. Page thirty-five is an analysis of the city's deposits and investments on the last day of the year, June 30, 2015, and where those, in what funds, or excuse me, in what line items those investments lie on the financial statements. So you can see your total deposits and investments were eleven point two million, made up of those types of investments that you see above that line, and down below, those numbers are referencing line items on page eighteen. So if you want to mark that, page eighteen, you can go to page eighteen and see each of those lines. So you know where, you know what your eleven point two million is invested in, or where it lies, and you know where it is on the financial statements. So I think that's kind of an important thing for you to note. Page thirty-eight. There's about nine point eight million dollars in investments, I mean, in additions to capital assets, five point two six million you see down there in about the middle of the page, shows the beginning balance, shows additions. So if you, if you look at that, there's nine point eight million in additions, and that kind of gives you a breakdown of what those additions were, what categories those were added into.
Lonny, help me out again, I'm sorry.
Page thirty-eight, about.
Thirty-eight.
Yeah, and you're not going to have that nine point eight million number, but I'm adding the, under the additions column, the five point six million and the four point one million.
So I'm looking under governmental activities or business-type activities? Where's it at?
Looking under governmental, excuse me.
And then additions?
Yes, and that's nine point eight million dollars. So you see, five point two six six is land.
This one and this one?
Four point five three four, five one, right on.
That, that number, the four point five three, is the depreciation that was added, so that's a minus. But you really want to hone in on the five point six and the four point one, and together, those total about nine point eight million.
Where's your? Oh, five point six here, and four point one's there.
Yeah.
All right, now, explain that to, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, you know, as a governing body, I'm sure you want to know where your, you know, what did we, what did we buy, what, you know, what would, what did we spend our money on in regards to capital assets? That column kind of gives you a broad reporting of what was spent and what category, so, you know, five point two six six million on land, the soccer fields, probably were the majority of the land prepared for the soccer fields, or what, that was to be used for those, probably the majority. or what, that was to be used for those, probably the majority of that, and then infrastructure. I don't recall, I mean, you're following along. I don't know whether that was the Prairie West, but that should be in the, I think that's probably, I think the Prairie, that's Prairie West, infrastructure addition, but. Anyway, study that, if you have questions, we can answer those and. Page thirty-nine is an analysis of all the debt. And so I, you know, I think it's important again, as a governing body, for you to know where do we start, what do we add, what do we pay off? And so this is kind of a presentation of the debt. Now, had some refunding going on, so, you know, you added, you added a lot of debt, but you refunded a lot of debt, so that kind of lays it out there, Crawford and Associates has laid it out. By, you know, what did we refund? Well, there's a column for refunding. The deductions column is, I'm guessing and pretty sure that that's just principal reductions that you pay off, you know, where you're paying off your debt on a semi-annual or monthly basis, however you're required to pay that, so. Okay, we're getting close, so bear with me. I think page forty-four, not, not a, not a normal or usual disclosure, but it's very important here with the city of Yukon, given the fact that, you know, so much has happened here. So, so what, you know, Frank was talking about how many adjustments they had, and part of what they have to do is you, you not only have to adjust things throughout the year, but you have to adjust the beginning balances. So, so, you know, this is just a schedule of all the adjustments that were made to the beginning, you know, fund balances or net position balances by fund. So if you go, you know, it's in very, very small print, but you can see just the number of adjustments they've had to make. You know, typically, what we'll see, and I mean, it's a lot, they may have one or two of these, but it's one or two. You can see there's a, you know, a, a long list of items that had to be adjusted. And of course, one of our jobs was, we had to go through and verify all these entries that they made and tie them back to documentation to say, well, is this really right? And, and that's what we did, so.
There are more pages on forty, forty-five as well?
Forty-five and forty-six, of course, forty-six is not really a restatement, but it's just showing you how those fund balances are classified, and, you know, there's, some of those are restricted and some of them are assigned. So, okay, page, again, I think another important thing for you as a governing body to know is what was moved between the funds. Because I'm not sure that you were presented with that information just from me and our firm looking at the minutes. And it's, it's, it's kind of a mind blower to me that twenty-seven million dollars was moving around.
What, Lonnie, what page?
Page forty-seven, I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not keeping you up to date on where I'm jumping to. So page forty-seven shows the transfers between funds. So you can see in the first column, transfer, it was transferred from that fund to the fund in the second column. So it kind of gives you an idea of all the money that was moving around between the funds during that year. This is a required disclosure, but it's, again, it's typically not to the, you know, don't see it to the extent that it's been done here in this particular fiscal year, so. Then on page forty-eight, if funds, you know, if there's not an authorization through the budget to move money from one fund to the next, then there's, that creates a payable or receivable situation from one fund to the next. So you can see that the funds in the first column owe the funds in the second column those amounts of money. So in the case of the general fund, down those last three lines at the bottom, there's four point six million dollars that needs to be paid from the sales tax improvement fund. And then C D G four, five sixty-four and Suit Water Sewer, two hundred thirty-one thousand. So all of this appears to have been done because of the negative cash situation. The money was moved from fund to fund and, and there's a large or significant amounts of payables and receivables between funds. Another thing we don't see a lot of, so. Okay, so we're gonna move from page forty-eight because forty, forty-nine through, well, actually, bottom of forty-eight through page sixty-three is a discussion about the three pension plans, there's a lot of technical stuff in there. I just don't feel it's necessary to go through all that, although, you know, I think Frank mentioned there was a misstatement in the pension accounting on the two previously issued two thousand fifteen financial statements. So that had to be restated, there's also, you know, there's the O P E B is an acronym for other post-employment benefits, and that really has to deal with the health insurance that, that the city will cover for retiring employees. So that was a large misstatement. All of that discussion, not necessarily the discussion of the misstatement, but all the discussion about the information in the, the three plans, and then the O P E B is in those pages that we're going to skip over, and skipping over it just because, again, it's highly technical and a lot of information, but, you know, it's worth going back and looking at when you have time. Page sixty-four, compliance. Now, will, the city self-reports compliance issues, or what we would say is non-compliance, where the city hasn't complied. And so they were self-report in footnote fifteen under compliance. They were, the, the city's reporting, they've created deficits in those two funds, and that's prohibited. The city is also reporting that they haven't complied with the budget to the extent that the budget is prepared and adopted based on department levels, and those, those particular departments exceeded their budget without any kind of an amendment to the budget, so basically they were over budget, and that was a violation. And then the one that's been talked about earlier was the use of the reserve fund monies, that's on page sixty-five at the top. You know, quarter cent sales tax money that was to be set aside for reserves. City is self-reporting that some of that money was used, and, and giving the details in, on that page sixty-five at the top there. Footnote sixteen talks about future accounting pronouncements, so we won't spend any time there. I'd like, and, and, you know, just in page seventy through, seventy through eighty-eight, some of you are curious from time to time about the funding levels of, of the pension plans. That information is in there, there's some combining statements in there that combine the smaller funds, what we call non-major funds, combine them into one column, and then they get moved up to the front. Won't spend any time going over there, but let's go to the last thing that I want to talk about, and that's on page ninety-one. Ninety-one and ninety-two, as I mentioned in my opening remarks, these, this report is, is a byproduct of you, if you will, of our audit, of the financial states audit of the numbers. But as we evaluate your internal controls and as we look at transactions to determine whether they complied, we, we note certain things, and so we have findings in both internal control and we have findings of non-compliance. Some of those have already been self-reported in your footnotes, but we restate those. So it's not a clean opinion as far as internal control and compliance with laws and regulations, and comments one through seven give the details, so. And the condition is, on, on item number one, page ninety-three, the condition, the condition is that the cash reconciliation reports presented to the, the city's outside accounting consultants, and I'm talking about the new consultants, because I have no idea what was presented to the prior consultants. But what was presented to the new consultants did not proper, did not have proper reconciling items. They had to go through and do extensive work to get the bank to tie to the books, the bank, the bank accounts to tie to the books.
Is that part of the hundred and some odd issues?
Yes, sir.
Hundred and fifty-four?
There were, you know, our comment is there was a significant number of reconciling items that were not reported, and these, the amounts were material, I mean, and that's why I think, I think, you know, internally even, maybe they were a little lost about where they were, just my opinion, I wasn't here, but I think it was a situation where things got a little bit out of control maybe, and so, there you are. So, you know, obviously, we all have personal checkbooks, we all reconcile our checkbooks, cities, businesses, everybody's got to do that, and, and you got to do it properly, and, you know, I think some of the things that were going on probably, you know, the bank was holding checks, the city was probably holding checks. Again, I wasn't here, can't say for sure, I'm just guessing, but all of that makes a reconciliation a nightmare, so, when you have all that going on, so. So that's, that's kind of it on, on comment one. Comment two. The bonds and debt that we were talking about earlier, where, you know, people are out there buying your bonds, investors are out there buying your bonds. A lot of times trustee banks are keeping track of the bond activity. They, they have the accounting records, their own accounting records, which are a little bit different from the accounting records that the city would keep. They don't always think in terms of debits and credits, they kind of have their own little way of doing things. But what the city has to do, they have to take those records and interpret them and incorporate them into their general ledger activity. General ledger is simply an accumulation of all the transactions of a fund. So that's not being done, and I think a lot of things, you know, get missed when you, you know, and, and you might, it, it can be significant if, if you're in a capital expenditure mode, you're not reporting those in your books. You don't really know, you know, if, if someone would hand the council a financial statement minus that activity, you wouldn't really know, because you're not getting a copy of the trustee statement. So I think it's very important that that gets incorporated into the accounting records. It's a bigger deal when you're in expansion mode, you're building infrastructure, doing things with bond money. But, you know, I, I maintain it's, it's an important thing at whatever point you are in the life of those bonds, so. Okay, item number three, again, a similar issue is that we don't really get an up-to-date report of, we go out and, we buy a building, we go out and buy a tractor, go out and buy a truck. That kind of all gets run through an expenditure account and gets buried in, but there has to be some kind of accounting or listing of a cap, of capital assets, and it needs to be done on a regular basis. I think it needs to be done at least quarterly. You may have to enlist the assistance of Crawford and Associates to do that, but I think it's important that those records continue to be built and reviewed by the council. I mean, you have a right to know, you know, because you see this information, this flood of invoices coming through twice a month, but you don't really get a report, you know, per se, that gathers it all up and says, here's what we spent it on, you know, this month or this quarter, here's what we spent it on, so, I mean, to me, that's important. Because the magnitude of what you're spending becomes more obvious when you see it all right there instead of invoice, invoice, in my, my opinion, but I think it does, you know, so I think that's important. And then item number four on page ninety-six, this has to do with some comments that Frank made earlier about, you know, the, what we'll call competitive bidding. Now, the city has a more restrictive ordinance than the state law has. So, so at some point, I don't even remember the year, I knew it at one time, but, you know, the city adopted an ordinance, ordinance, which is very, a, a good thing to do, you know, it's a very positive move to control purchases. But for, for various reasons, those ordinances and, and even in some cases, state law, were not followed in this particular year of some of the things we looked at. And, and sometimes it's hard to, you know, it could be that, let's say, for example, ordinance requires that if something's over two thousand dollars, get three phone quotes. Well, I might, you know, to, to prove that that happened, there has to be some kind of documentation. So I'm not saying it didn't happen, but there was no documentation on a lot of those transactions that we looked at that we felt should have had some documentation saying, we called Joe, Joe's Hardware and Sam's Hardware and somebody else and got a quote and, you know, we picked this one, because it was the best. Now, I think in a lot of instances, the purchasing function in this particular year and probably in, in a few prior years, kind of went haywire. Because if you don't have some kind of centralized purchasing, you can lose control really fast, and I think that's what happened. The centralized purchasing went away, and the control was lost to, to a large extent. Again, that's just observation on our part, can't say that's for sure, you know, that's the real reason that it occurred, but it appears that's what happens. Item number five, already talked about it, it's the deficit, deficits in fund balance, it's prohibited by law. You can't, you can't create a deficit fund balance, except for in a public trust fund, which is, you know, basically the Y M A, so. Also, number six, the city prepares its budget in accordance with Municipal Budget Act. Budgeted by department level, we already talked about that, they overspent in certain departments. Might add a comment there, you as a council authorize the city manager, management of the city to spend a certain amount. That's your, that's your control, that's your level of control. And so if, if, if somebody, if the police department is about to overspend and they, they need to spend money on something, they, somebody has to come to the council and say, we need a budget amendment, will you give us a budget amendment? You can't just go overspend in a fund or in a department. You have to get authorization from the council, because the council, that's their level, that's their control. The council controls the city's expenditures and appropriations with, with the budget, so. So it's important, you know, to follow those budget laws. So it's important, you know, to follow those budget laws and to not spend more than the council is allowed to spend, allowed the management to spend. The last one, again, is a biggie to me, you know, spending of the reserve fund money. It's a desperation move, I believe, and because of, you know, as Frank mentioned earlier, the bank was holding checks, vendors were needing money, trying to find ways to pay the bills, and so, you know, they dipped into the reserve funds, and that was the no-no. Anyway, that's kind of our report, and I think, you know, I'd open it up to questions and...
Councilwoman Yanda.
Well, I just want to be reassured that you're here to help us work on our internal controls and so that the council has access to all the financials and the reports that we should have.
You know, our job is, as auditors, we're prohibited from, you know, designing or implementing internal controls. And so, if we do that, then we cross over into management, and so then we're not allowed to audit. And that's kind of the reason that you have this two-firm system now, because the auditors, back in the old days, they'd clean up the books, make all these one-hundred-and-eighty-five adjustments that Frank's firm made, and then they'd go in and audit. And it's like, well, you're auditing yourself, because you cleaned up the book. So we're not really allowed to get involved in the internal controls, so that's...
Yeah, Mr. Crawford would handle that.
That's right. So that would be their responsibility. But what I will say, and I want to say, is this, I think, and I'm going again by the minutes, but I think the council needs better information and more than just the sales taxes are up, because you can't make, this is a forty-million-dollar city now, it's not your father's city. You know, there's twenty or thirty years ago, maybe you could have run this city by knowing what the sales taxes were, but you can't do that now, because it's forty million dollars, that's a lot of money. That's a big operation. So you need detailed reports, at least on a monthly basis, or at least on a quarterly basis, and maybe you need a monthly, but you need good information. And I don't think that's what, I don't think you're getting, you know, from what I read in the minutes, I mean, now, and I look at the agendas, or the packets, the agenda packets, don't see it in there, so I don't, you know, maybe you were getting it, but if you were, I didn't see it. So I guess, in your defense, you weren't getting, you weren't getting good information. I mean, you weren't getting the information that you need to make a call that, hey, we're spending too much, or our cash position is very poor. You didn't have the information you needed to make that call, in my opinion, so. But, yeah, I think Frank's firm will help.
Thank you.
With that, and I think they can be involved in giving you, getting you that information, whether they assist the internal folks that are, you know, they have all the computer reports, and they can assist them with questions or what things to present, because really, you don't need the whole, you know, you don't need all the special revenue fund activities, you just need the major operating funds of the city. What are we spending money on? Why do we got money? You know, what is our cash balance?
Anything else? Councilman Smaestra.
Well, we are getting a lot of information now that we didn't.
Okay.
You were talking about the former, I know.
I was talking about, you know, 2015.
I wanted to be sure everybody else.
Okay, that's good. Good to know, good to know.
So now it's really better. We really appreciate it. We get lots of notices through the week, through the month, whenever, and so we are involved there.
That's good.
Yes.
And hopefully it'll get better. I mean, it's, you know, it's always a work in progress, so, but it'll get better.
Anything else? Anything else, council? Councilman Russell.
Make sure that we're all, maybe people listening's on the same track, a lot of the findings that you're, all of this is about, that's what took place previously, not what's happening right now.
Right, our audit was limited to that period in July four, July two thousand fourteen.
I just wanted to make sure people watching understood that.
Yes, that's correct.
That's all for me.
Councilman McCarron.
Well, I appreciate the seven findings at the end, particularly the ones that are, you know, show pretty negligent culpability on information we didn't receive. And so from that standpoint, and your end of it now is, I assume you're completed, in the sense that with 2015, you now believe that that will provide us with the correct base moving forward.
Yes, yes.
To sixteen and seventeen, so that any other serious problems would be found much more easily than they have been in the past, because of the fact that the books were not correct enough for us to make reasonable determinations.
Correct.
And so, but, so your feeling is that the fifteen with Mr. Crawford's corrections are, have put the fifteen audit in place, so that sixteen and hence on into seventeen, that we should go forward with a reasonable level of assurance that we're going to have a decent audit? Were there any really major controls, other than some of the notes, that you feel like we haven't done at this point that need addressing?
Well, the thing, the two things that, you know, we didn't really address in our report had to do with things that happened as part of Crawford's work. They have to go in and, you know, record the pension liability. And again, as I was saying, that's very technical. But, you know, that, I think that the OPEB calculation, you know, there was fifteen million recorded on the books of the city as an obligation of the city, and that number was way high, way too high. And it actually came on in 2012, I believe. And so, probably what somebody should have done or thought about is, why is that, you know, somebody should have asked the question, because it was done by an outside consulting firm, and the auditors and the accountants relied on it. But then, it never really, you know, nobody ever really asked the question, you know, why is that so high? Because it turns out it was higher than the, if I recall, our pension liability, wasn't it? It shouldn't be, you know, I mean...
Is that the reason, though, that we reported originally from the other guys, that it was fully funded?
No.
Or did I?
Well, that was a separate issue. The pension, the pension, I believe they did report that it was fully funded, and it wasn't, but... But that, I mean, well, I guess what I'm saying is, on the 2015 financial statements, you know, and, you know, you're relying on experts, so it's a little difficult, but if an expert says it's fifteen million, you kind of take that number and book it, but you kind of really got to step back, kind of, as you mentioned earlier, the twenty thousand or thirty thousand foot level, and say, what, does that really look right? Why would that be higher than a, that's just health insurance, you know?
Well, I guess my question, though, is, is there any more work that needs to be done in that area that we would need to look at in sixteen?
I don't think so, I think it's cleaned up now, but I'm guessing, I mean, those were just internal control. When you mentioned, were there any, the internal control there would be, should we have somebody else look at this, I guess, because this doesn't look right, and it wasn't right, but now, I think, you know, part of what you do there is you, you have to determine the qualifications and experience of the actuaries that you're dealing with. And so, you know, make sure that you're...
Well, I, yeah, I realize some of it's our best guess is the liability.
Yeah, but I guess the internal control is determining that and making sure that you get a good number, and that you've got a regular...
But you feel like, at this point, with the reconciliation of fifteen, that in point in fact going into sixteen, when we look at those numbers again, reconciling them this year, that we should have a much more accurate position that is, and will give us an accurate picture of where we stand?
Yes, and a much better comparability.
Okay, that's, I mean, that's my real question there, is to make sure that we've got the accuracy we need. And that's it for me, thank you.
Ms. Rhoma, I have a few questions. You made a statement a minute ago that someone should have said, well, this doesn't look right. So I assume that maybe you're talking about the council?
So... No, not necessarily.
Then who should have said this doesn't look right?
I would say the auditors. I mean, you know, as an audit firm that has done many cities over the years and many private businesses, we miss a few things, but, you know, sometimes things just don't pass the smell test, and so maybe, you know, it would be, because I don't think that would be anything that you would be expected to see or to notice, but I do believe somebody that understands this stuff better, like an accounting firm and an audit firm, you know, should be able to recognize that, so...
That was my question. Some of this is probably what looks pretty simple to you, looks pretty complicated, at least to me, I won't speak for the other council members, but, so did you have an opportunity to hear and listen to the December first, 2015 report that was given to the council?
No, I did not. I did read about it in the paper, though, I mean, that was only...
Okay, so you don't have an opinion of whether that was accurate or not?
No, I mean, Frank mentioned this earlier, but when I picked up the report, the first time that I'd seen the 2015 report, there were glaring problems in it, like he mentioned, negative, I think it was three-point-five million, negative restricted. You can't have three-point-five million in negative restricted investments, you know? It's either zero or something higher than zero. So, and that was, that wasn't the only thing, it was the OPEB, the fifteen, and there were several things, but it just indicated to me there were some issues, but I didn't, other than reading that in the paper, I'd...
Okay. And I just had a few, and I don't know that this was your role either, but I'd like to address the missing money issue with you. Did you discover that there's any missing money or any issue regarding funds that...
Indicated to me there were some issues, but I didn't, other than reading that in the paper, I'd...
Okay. And I just had a few, and I don't know that this was your role either, but I'd like to address the missing money issue with you. Did you discover that there's any missing money or any issue regarding funds that are unaccounted for?
No. Part of what we are required to do as auditors is to interview, conduct interviews regarding fraud or misappropriation. We interviewed probably no less than six or eight people who, you know, were involved in the financial end of things here at the city and are still employed here, and we learned nothing through those interviews, and we didn't find any evidence of fraud
Okay. Let me check back through my... 2014, the financial statement, in your opinion, I mean, is there, should we address that? Does it need to be redone?
I can't believe that by now anyone would be relying on that. Do you have a...
Yeah, usually with, usually with the issuance of a subsequent year, it basically renders the relevance of the prior year kind of moot, so, other than restate the beginning of fifteen, which was the end of fourteen, I think that's the extent that we probably should have went. If you engage to reissue fourteen, I don't have any doubt that we would have similar adjustments to what we saw in fifteen, simply because I saw, and you saw, the restatement of fourteen on pages forty-four and forty-five that just outlined a number of issues, so I would imagine that fourteen as a whole would have been problematic also. But the relevance of fourteen, now that fifteen is issued, is kind of a moot point.
At least from my standpoint, what I'm most concerned about is moving forward, but I want to make sure that the foundation that we have to move forward from is solid. So by doing, redoing fifteen, that creates that solid foundation, gives us the cornerstone to start with and then move our finances forward.
Right, and, you know, I mentioned that, and I don't know, in pages, but when we talked about restating beginning, basically what they were doing was resetting the end of 2014 balances. So, in a way, in a roundabout way, we've reset 2014 by going back and restating the beginning of 2015 fiscal year, so...
Okay.
The other thing I might say is, you know, I mentioned in my opening remarks, that we'd looked at it, the things that happened from July through June of 2015, July fourteen. And so, when I say to you that there was no fraud or misappropriation that we discovered, I have to qualify that and say, you know, in our year. Now, there was, I mean, there was something that I didn't feel was above board, and that was with the vehicle that was purchased, it never went, you know, that transaction never went through the council. That's been reported in the media, I think. We looked at that transaction, we didn't find any evidence that it went through the council. We felt like, and that was part of our comment, that that transaction didn't go through council, and it also wasn't purchased from a state agency. So that was in our year, having trouble remembering, but it seems like, though, the council approved the old vehicle to go to surplus, but I can't really recall that.
That's correct.
Okay. So in a way, it was kind of getting ready for the new vehicle, but then the final part of that transaction should have been, either purchase it through a state agency, or you, you know, put it out for bids, so...
Okay.
Now...
Any other questions by the council? Mr. Crosby?
No questions, sir.
Ladies?
No.
Ms. Rhoma, thank you for your hard work, it's an excellent report, we appreciate it. I might need some help if I start to go over the pages that you suggest, I'm not sure that I will always understand, but thank you, we appreciate that very much.
All right, thank you.
So we are still at two A, and we would need any further discussion, discussion on the matter, discussion? Call the roll, please. McCarron?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Smaestra?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Next item is two, and that's the acceptance of the revised 2014-15 financial audit performed by HBC CPAs and advisors. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please. Alberts? Yes. Smaestra?
Yes.
Yanda?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Next item is two, and that's the acceptance of the revised 2014-15 financial audit performed by HBC CPAs and advisors. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Call the roll, please. Yanda?
Yes.
McCarron?
Yes.
Smaestra?
Yes.
Alberts?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Before we adjourn the meeting, I would like to ask the city manager, are there any final statements you'd like to make?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I was asked to draw your attention to a number of items or questions at the allegations of council concerns that were not addressed in the 2014-2015 revised audit. These items are outside the scope of the audit mainly because of date of occurrence, or they were really something they would not normally look into. These items, questions, allegations have been examined and addressed, and all pertinent information has been referred to the proper authorities. These include the purchasing agent that was relieved of her duties regarding purchasing items, purchasing procedures that have been talked about where quotes were not given, purchase of the Polycarts, purchase of dumpsters rollos, purchase of the wood chipper, purchase of trucks for pulling transfer trailers, purchase of a rolloff truck, building improvements at the sanitation department, city vehicles... city vehicles that were purchased that purchasing procedures were not followed, the Prairie West Boulevard development and Health Center Parkway that were not properly bid, purchase of two fifteen-passenger electric shuttles, parks and recreation repair and replacement projects, purchase of a children's train, the, uh, light poles at Chisholm Trail Park that we received a grant, but it was never bid properly, therefore, we did not get full reimbursement of the grant. Sidewalks and crosswalk and beacon project that we got a grant for and, uh, was not bid competibly, competibly. Purchase of city vehicles for the previous city manager that was just addressed, and items where several checks and number of checks were not given to the city for approval through normal process. Of course, the public employee sales tax funds that have been deleted, were depleted, and these were restricted funds and were not used in the proper manner. The two thousand twelve and two thousand thirteen bond requisitions, fire apparatus, gear and equipment that was not purchased properly, purchase of property at the new city hall, proposed sports complex with a number of questions on how this was handled, the question of the lobbyists with the city, and a question of a city official that received bids or, uh, received contracts with the city without properly being bid, and a question of a city official that had been previously mentioned that, uh, purchased property after voting on that property. And, uh, again, these items have been referred to the proper authorities and will be addressed at a later time by them.
Thank you, sir. I would also like, uh, Mr. Heim talked about, uh, the need for additional controls, and Councilwoman Smaestra talked about that. Uh, I'm happy to announce that we are regularly, I believe, monthly, given a report about the status of all the accounts. So, now the council is monitoring monthly the status of the different accounts. Mr. Crosby came and began on April the first of two thousand and sixteen. I just want to run down through five accounts. There was the pooled cash account that had eight hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars in it. Today, it has two million, two hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and eight dollars and fifty-eight cents. That account is up one million, three hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars and forty-seven cents. The pest police account, at the time that Mr. Crosby came on April the first, had a hundred and twenty-four thousand, three sixty-two in it. Uh, the current balance is three hundred and sixty thousand, eight sixteen. The account is up two hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty-four dollars. So, money is going back into the pest account. The pest fire account had eighty-nine thousand dollars in it on April the first of two thousand and sixteen. The current balance is two hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twelve cents. That's an increase of two hundred and six thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars and forty-nine cents. Again, money is being put back into the firemen's pest account. The general employees' pest account had eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars, currently stands at three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven dollars. That account is up two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars. And then the general fund reserves, at the time that Mr. Crosby arrived in April, had nine hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars in it. The account now has one million, four hundred and seventy-six thousand, ninety-four dollars and forty-three cents. I'm happy to announce that the account is up five hundred and seventy thousand, one hundred and six dollars and seventy-four cents. So, those are, that is an example of, uh, the policies and procedures that have changed, that have been implemented. That's the progress that we have made. So, while everything has been going on to put these reports together and to provide this information, um, the new staff, the new management, the council has been diligently working to repair the problems that existed. Once we discovered those, we've implemented policies and changed those. We're continuing to implement policies and make additional changes in order to, not only to address what's happened, but to try to prevent these things or anything like this from happening in the future. So, that's the information that I have. Any council members like to make additional comments? Additional comments? Seeing no other matter before the council, at this time, we stand adjourned, item three.